Steve? Cameron?
I can hear you.
You can hear us now, thank you.
Yeah.
I can hear you as well, Chris.
Alan, if you would like to go ahead and restart your presentation?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. So there was audio issues. We're beginning from the beginning and we'll run back through. At the May 26th city council meeting, the council directed the applicant to revise the Skybreak subdivision plans to address the three elements. Again, this was a subdivision originally for 329 lots on private streets. The three directives were to provide sidewalks on at least one side of all streets. The second was to provide a better transition between the southern perimeter of the subdivision and the vantage point subdivision to the south. The recommendation was to do this by extending the larger lots at the southeast corner of Phase Seven across the west. The third was to relocate some of the open space at the south to a more central location. So first one was to provide sidewalks on at least one side of the streets. This is a color version of the plat. It's a little tricky to see, but if you, in this here sort of to the middle and east, this is the area in particular where there were no sidewalks. If you can see by the colors there, they've provided five-foot sidewalks on at least one side of all the streets. So all of the streets here now have at least one sidewalk on, or sorry, have at least a sidewalk on one side of the street. The second was, the directive was to provide a better transition between the southern perimeter of the subdivision and the vantage point subdivision to the south. The recommendation was to do this by extending the larger lots at the southeast corner of Phase Seven across the southern boundary. There are two plans here. The top one is what you saw at the last meeting. The bottom one is what's proposed now. As you can see, this road and this open space has gone away, and these lots here have been expanded along the property line. Hang on here. The third was to relocate some of the open space at the south to a more central location. These arrows are showing what has changed. The one to the left, the arrow is showing that open space was originally at the south along with that road. Now at the south, these lots again have been expanded across the boundary, and that open space has been moved here central. The amount of open space, the area, is roughly the same, so they haven't lost any open space. However, they have lost lots. They originally were at 329 lots. With this, they are now at 316 lots. The council also asked to have proposed conditions of approval. And when we came back to you, in your memo packet, there are proposed conditions of approval that have been worked together with staff and the applicant. My understanding is that the applicant is amenable to all of those conditions of approval. If the council is inclined to approve this present version with the conditions as proposed, there's a few things the council will be incorporating as part of their motion that staff wanted to mention to the council. The first is that the council will be overturning the planning director's denials of the following alternative compliance requests. The first is allowing 106 lots where only 50 are allowed. The second would be allowing three common driveways off of a private street where this is not allowed. There's also following, these following waivers that the council would be approving. The first one would be allowing, and I'm going to have a map right after this to show you exactly what this means because it's kind of hard to visualize all these numbers in your head. One of them would be allowing the Phase Eight cul-de-sac to be longer than 500 feet. The other would be allowing the block nine, which again I'll show you, to be 1,000 feet, whereas it's limited by the code to 750. The third would be allowing block five along the southern boundary to be almost 1,200 square feet, whereas it's limited to 750 by the code. And the last would be approving alternative compliance, which requires a minimum amount of landscape along pathways and to allow the pathway area shown in lot 46 to remain as a natural state. So again, the first would be here. This cul-de-sac extends approximately to 610 feet. This cul-de-sac here, or sorry, this block here is limited to 750 feet. Approving this would allow a waiver to 1,000 feet. Down here, 750-feet-long block is allowed, whereas this is just short of 1,200 feet. And then this pathway here, if you're crediting pathways as part of your open space or any kind of open space, it has to be landscaped at one tree per 8,000 square feet. This would stay in the naturally landscaped area. With that, that concludes my presentation of the three different directives that we were given.
Thank you, Alan. Council, any questions for staff?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilwoman Schrader.
Thanks. And I, you know, unfortunately was not in the last meeting, but, and I get it that the cake, I hope the cake hasn't been totally baked, but I actually had a question for the fire department. Yeah, I'm looking at the agency reports. This is partially within the five-minute response time, clearly not fully within the five-minute response time at all. There's an updated phasing plan attached. I believe it was, it looks like it was published on June 23rd. I was hoping that maybe Deputy Chief Bonjorno could walk us through, how does this phasing align with the hypothetical construction and delivery of a future fire station in South Meridian if that were to occur?
Sure. Excuse me, Mr. Mayor and Councilwoman Schrader, I believe I'll leave that to the applicant to answer as far as timing goes. I believe, I think, one of the conversations that Laren and I had was their first phase, and Laren can correct this if I'm wrong, the discussion we had was their first phase, I believe, was going to fall in line with when Station Seven would have been constructed and occupied, that April of 2023 timeframe-ish. So again, I'll let Laren or their applicant talk about that as far as the, as far as it goes. And then the phasing plan, the main reason for the phasing plan is to make sure we have secondary access throughout the construction phasing, to make sure we have good access while they're being built.
Thanks. So thanks, Mr. Mayor. I'll be looking for commentary from the applicant team on that.
Counsel, any additional questions for staff?
Mayor, counsel, if I could just provide one clarification before the applicant comes up. So Alan had alluded in his presentation that he wanted you to approve an alternative compliance, and that's, that's not the intent tonight. The intent is, there's a condition of approval that the applicant will have to seek alternative compliance to allow that slope to stay in a natural state and allow the pathway to be a different material than asphalt. I think their intent is to have that more of a gravel, more natural walking amenity for the subdivision. The code does allow for that through alternative compliance, so I just wanted to be clear on the record what the intent of that was for your action tonight if you choose to move forward on approval of this project.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Holden?
Question for Alan or Bill. On the length of some of the roadways, it says unless there's an intersection. And I noticed there's several T intersections, so are we talking about a through intersection is what would be allowed for the longer length, not a T intersection?
Mr. Councilman, what that means is these blocks, and let me see if I can share again. You can't have a block width on one side without having a walkway, a pathway, a road, the end of a block, or something like that. There's several block lengths that are just houses with no intersecting pathway or street.
So, Mr. Mayor?
Deputy Chief?
Also, I think one thing that, to note about that natural pathway area, that also will be included in that fire plan that they're planning on providing to me prior to, was it final plan, I believe, or something? I don't remember exactly what it was. So that whole area, yes, it may retain the natural look of it, but they still have to maintain it to make sure that we don't end up with a wildfire on that hillside.
Counsel, before we hear from the applicant?
Mr. Mayor?
Counsel, I'm Pearl.
Bill, I just wanted to clarify. You were discussing the wording in the proposed conditions of approval. If I understand correctly, that the, that the director has already denied approval of the alternative compliance requests for three and four, and that council would need to overturn them? Is that just, that's, that's the wording correction that you're referencing? Is it just for numbers three and four?
Mayor, members of the council, Councilman Pearl, I'm, I'm not sure what you mean by number three and four.
The proposed conditions of approval in the June 21 memo?
Yes, so that would be if you're going to overturn the director's decision of approving private streets and the common drives off of the private streets. Yes.
Thank you.
Would the applicant like to come forward?
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. Deborah Nelson. My address is 601 West Bannock Street here on behalf of the applicant. We really appreciate the very clear direction that the mayor and city council was able to provide. It enabled us to revise the site plan, to address each of the three changes that you specified, and to work with your planning staff and with the fire department to review those, to work through until they, they were able to support them as well. We are in full agreement with the proposed conditions of approval, and we do ask for your support of the development with those conditions as proposed. Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Schrader, with, if I could, I'd respond to your question as well. You were asking about fire phasing. We did work out a fire phasing plan actually initially with the fire department. I think the only reason for the update was that the layout is a little different with the extended homes, so it reflects the new lot layout. But the phasing has been consistent with our discussions with Mr. Bonjorno throughout, identifying that we have primary and secondary access for each phase. Phase one is expected to be coming into occupancy in 2023. Phase one is expected to be coming into occupancy in two thousand twenty-three, and so that would be timed approximately with the new fire station that's planned. Also, that is the area that's close to Eagle Road, and so it is still within the five-minute response time now. And so as the future phases come in, we expect them to be timed in accordance with that, that fire station as well, similar to other developments that have been improved in the area. Pinnacle, Piribita, Poema, that also were developed in full and approved. Expectation of that fire station coming online. We are really excited to bring forward this skybreak community for the city. It was, as redesigned, we did lose the fourteen lots, but we retained the qualified open space at eighteen percent and fourteen amenities. We've got the exceptional rim view lots. We have the golf cart access, and we think with all of these amenities and unique placement of this property next to the golf course, that this is gonna be a community that your residents are, are proud to find home and that you can be proud to have in your city. And we'd stand for any questions.
Thank you. Council, any questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Borton?
Really clear direction. There's only four of, or the six of us, and we were kinda teetering on, on sides of what might happen with this application. And so I don't recall it as being clear cut perhaps, or even our direction frankly, maybe not as clear as you phrased it. One of the questions that came up is on, amongst the list of requested waivers is the landscaping and pathway and the common open space. Alan, if you could pull that exhibit you created up again?
Sure.
On that right-hand side, no additional landscaping required. And it sounded like in addition to that, it would be, it wouldn't be an improved pathway. It would be gravel or natural state. So, and Deputy Chief Bonjourno referenced maintenance of that. So if it's natural slash weeds, sagebrush, who maintains that? It's just really unique compared to more traditional grass. Manicured open space. Who maintains it, or what organization maintains it and how?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Borton. So the CCNRs will have provisions for maintenance of this area, and the HOA will be responsible for maintaining it. And the pathway, actually, the design of it hasn't changed since our original plans here. We're, we're actually excited to bring forward kind of a little different amenity than you get opportunities for here. I think you may recall in the last hearing, we had discussion about that it has the, the reminiscence of the Boise foothills, the opportunity to have a natural walking path outside your door. We recognize that does have to be balanced with fire concerns, and so we have met with Joe quite a bit about that. He's asked for a wildland safety plan, and so that has to be provided to him, and that is what has to be done before the first final plat, to make sure that it will be a, a safe area. The CCNRs will include provisions that require the HOA to conduct regular maintenance on the, on the native grasses, such as mowing them twice a year to keep them cut and safe during fire season. So, and all of these provisions will have to be reviewed and approved by Mr. Bonjourno. So we, we do feel that it can be both a safe and a unique opportunity for the development to have that natural hillside path. It creates a great walking loop for the entire development, and it gives everybody a chance to enjoy those nice views, not just the rim view lots.
Council, any additional questions from the applicant? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing. Mr. Cork, do we have anybody sent up to try testimony on the side of the scene?
Mr. Mayor, yes, we have six signed in, four indicating they wish to testify. I apologize if I mispronounced this, but Elizabeth Kokeritz, thank you, representing HOA.
If you say your name and address to the record.
Elizabeth Kekeritz, it's a silent O, the rest is phonetic. Three oh five eight Narcell Kirk, three three seven oh two. Mayor, City Council, I am here representing the Vantage Point Homeowners Association. Just use the arrows, okay. First of all, the homeowners would like to say thank you to both the city council and to the applicant. They definitely believe that this plan is better by getting rid of the road that goes directly behind their homes by extending the lots. They really do appreciate that. So at this point in time, they're really just looking at having a few final tweaks made to the plan versus an entire redo. They do continue to believe that overall, this plan is not the right plan for this area. The density is just much more extreme than anywhere else in the area. And it just doesn't fit the surrounding neighborhoods. The housing types, they're seventy-five percent of them are on one-tenth of an acre. A significant portion are duplexes, and only a very few percentage of the homes are half an acre or larger. And in fact, the homes that were put on the larger lots are still not quite half an acre. They're still slightly under that half acre mark. This zoning is also significantly increased from the comp plan. It's changing from R eight to R fifteen near the rim, and then from R three to R eight south of the far lateral. Additionally, to approve this plan, the applicant is having to receive alternative compliance and waivers throughout. And so it just seems to the HOA that there is, there could be a better plan for this place, for this property, but given where we are right now, they do just have a few sort of small requests that they're looking for that would just really make this a lot more palatable to them and a lot easier. Just a much better plan. So the first, just running through these, and I'll discuss each of them briefly, is limit the site grading of the back. And I'm really just talking about the homes along the southern border. The other properties don't really affect them, and so we're not discussing those. Limit the site grading, so the floor elevations don't exceed two feet above where the current grading is. Ensure the drainage. There's going to be, you're gonna hear from a couple people tonight about the drainage issues of how the land is flowing from higher elevation down through one of the Vantage Point properties, and then down the historical drainage to Ten Mile Creek. And they do have some concern that if that gets built up, gets filled in, that there is going to be backflow onto their property, swampy properties, that it's just not gonna work super well, and that this is the time where we can get it right now versus waiting to the future when we do have these problems in the future. They're also looking at the last two lots to the east, and I'll also show you a map on this, having single home, single-story homes. They're asking that the construction be phased, or the removal of the topsoil be phased, so that, as we know, there was a big windstorm last week, so that there is, to minimize the dust that's blowing through the air, as well as to build a fence to help minimize that dust and the trash. And then there's one lot where they're asking to have the number of lots abutting it reduced from three to two. So first, the draining and grading, if you look at this, this is a historical map from some time ago, because there's obviously not a lot of houses right there. But that's really the, it flows down through the Vantage Point subdivisions to the house, to that, to that plot lot that is not yet developed in this, and then follows that drainage down to the Ten Mile Creek. And there's two other people that are gonna speak about this tonight. And so what they're really looking for is to have the building envelope just moved over a little bit on one of these lots, and I'll show you a map of that in a minute, so that they can, so we can better ensure that that drainage continues, that this natural drainage continues to be there, draining the property as it has in the past. And then also have the homeowners association have the opportunity to review and comment on the drainage and grading plans, to make sure that this really is going to drain as appropriate. Here's another view of this. You can see that, especially on the bottom picture, that there is quite a dip right there as the property drains down to the north. Looking at the single-story homes, the two houses on the end, what was presented to you in the developers and the applicant's slideshow in their movie that they showed? They were representing that these homes behind the Vantage Point subdivision would in fact be single-story. And the HOA, the Vantage Point subdivision, is simply asking that, at least on those end two, that those remain single-story as they were presented to help ease the transition between their larger allotted subdivision to this much more dense neighborhood. Additionally, as I mentioned, one of the homes also has, they still have three lots abutting up against them. It's the second house in from the edge, and they're asking to have that moved. And so you can see here just a rough schematic. The top shows what, how it is currently proposed, and the bottom shows just moving the lot line over a little bit, so that house that's second in on the right of your screen, I'm mixing up my right and my left, only has two properties abutting it instead of three. And that would result in the applicant only losing one property over this whole discussion. They're also asking for phased construction of the topsoil removal. If you, this picture was taken just last week from out in Meridian during the big dust storm that shut everything down. And so they're asking that the topsoil, that this just be phased, and so that they can be assured that there'll be slightly less dirt blowing through the air over the next seven to ten years. And they're also asking to minimize the trash that accumulates, as well as the dust, for a six-foot solid wooden fence to be placed along their border prior to any of the construction commencing. And that, quite honestly, is it. These are pretty small changes that would really make, would really help this, the Vantage Point HOA and the individuals that live there really accept this into their neighborhood and make this a lot more palatable development, and they leave everyone really happy with it. Do you have any questions?
Council, any questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Schrader.
And I apologize if you guys went over this in a previous meeting, but what's your subdivision like? Is it all single-story? Do you have any, you know, multiple-story buildings?
This subdivision, I apologize, I'm also, I'm an attorney representing them. I don't actually live in the subdivision, but it is, it's just, it's one street that comes through. They're all at least an acre lots, and they're multi, multiple-story large homes.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Schrader.
I appreciate typically arguments about transition, but I'm having a hard time with an argument about an abutting neighborhood having, you know, two-story homes, and then asking an adjacent development to limit their homes to one story. So, if my understanding that correctly, you have a couple of multi-story homes?
The homes, several of the homes are two stories, but this is where with the draining and drainage, so that they can continue to, it helps them enjoy their views, continue to enjoy their views as this development occurs.
Thanks.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Pearl.
Thank you for sharing this with us. Have you, have you and/or the HOA discussed these concerns with the applicant already? And, and what was the response? And then my second question is, if you go back to your first slide, I wanna understand if you're suggesting that the applicant isn't meeting what the city is, has, you know, conditioned, or, or is there, is there an opposition to the percentages of lots and whatnot that you've put on there? Are you suggesting that the applicant isn't meeting what is in, what is zoned or in the comprehensive plan? Or is this just a preference by the HOA on the number and sizes of lots?
So, Mayor Sodensen, Councilmember Pearl, as to your first question, some of these issues have been discussed. Some of them have come about more in the last few days as we've been discussing this and have not been raised with the applicant. But so these, the issues surrounding the zoning, those were raised, that it does not meet with the comp plan in some of these areas. I believe the comp plan shows R four, and this is R fifteen. Maybe it was R eight, I don't remember. But I do know it wasn't in compliance.
Council, any additional questions? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, next is Net Alonso, representing Southern Rim. Are you? Mr. White? Larry White, Vantage Point HOA.
Mayor, councilmembers, my name's Larry White. I live at three eight oh four East Vantage Point Lane, and I would like to answer some of those questions. Oh, I'm sorry.
And he's pulling that up for you now. We were expecting a different one, so just take a second.
So, Councilman Schrader, to answer your question, there are sixteen lots in Vantage Point, sixteen homes. Four of them are single-story, so twenty-five percent. Councilman Pearl, two of us, the two here. Councilman Pearl, the two of us here have coordinated with the developer several times. We had meetings, at least we had meetings in person on the site. We've had email conversations, phone conversations. We've done a lot of things. We've asked even to buy easements and single-story homes. We're, you're our last, you're our last resort, so there you go. Every time we've approached him, the answer has been no, they're, they're good with what they're at, so. So with those questions, I'll start now, so hopefully the three minutes starts now. So I live, does this work in the mouse?
Use the keyboard to click.
Keyboard click, does that work? Okay, so I live in the gray lot, the lot highlighted gray. What should I wanna talk to you today about is the historic drainage. So there's drainage that comes from Vantage Point. It all funnels down to the low lot in Vantage Point, which is ours, and continues to the north and to the west to Ten Mile Creek. So that's one topic I wanna talk to you about. The other one is transition. I'd like to recognize and thank the developer for what they've done for three of us in the subdivision. There's still two of us here, and I would like to talk specifically about what we're hoping for on the transition. Okay. Okay, so this is a, a figure of Vantage Point subdivision. I wish I had a pointer here, but Vantage Point subdivision, you can see the far lateral is the darker green, that's the high point on the rim. And this shows the contour elevations and how the contours go from south to northwest. And if you follow the arrows, you can see a lot of them go straighter to the side and end up in the, the green or the gray lot, which is ours. They continue north and to the west to Boise Ranch and Ten Mile Creek. There's about twelve acres that this drains to, to our lot. So that's one thing, there's a lot of area. We have poor soils up there. They infiltrate rain very poorly. When there's rainfall events, we frequently see ponding on our lawn. And the third thing is there's a big area, and it all goes down to really one discharge point. Okay, so looking back, this, obviously this drainage has been formed over thousands of years, but going back to Google Earth, we can get back to nineteen ninety-two, and you can see the shadows of this drainage. In the two thousand fourteen, our lot is the bear lot there. And again, there's the darker vegetation that drops down into Boise Ranch, which gets into Ten Mile Creek. Here's a blow-up. Working with our architect during the design of this, he recognized we're the low point. Everything's draining towards us and then further to the north. So we incorporated some things. We have a ditch swell on the west side of our property and a swell grass-lined on the east side, so we can take excess drainage from the roadway if that occurs in extreme event, go on either side of our house. We can take the drainage from the neighbor to the west and to the east, which happens now. It all goes down into our lawn area and then continues north. So, what our concern with is an extreme event, um, whether it's a quick snow melt with a rainstorm, whether it's a hundred-year precipitation event, everything's coming to this point and heading north. So there's a couple ways to handle that, and I'll show you what Skyward Neighborhood did.
That the timer should have gone off, but it's not beeping on us.
Is that only three minutes?
Well, he actually had about five minutes so far, um, with the answering the questions and otherwise. So if you can wrap up your comments related to this issue as best you can, if counsel has any follow-up questions, they can ask those.
Okay, so that's what, uh, Propose Skyward did. We know that's not an option. This is what Skybreak's doing. They're putting a house right in the bottom of that, um, which we don't think is an option. We're proposing something different. Here's the build area with the current lot size, just sliding the homeowner, the home to the west a little bit from what they show currently in their narrative. Um, here's that same area if the two lots are granted to our neighbor to the west. And what we're looking for really is what's shown on the promotional video that the developer prepared. You can see they have a 15-foot setback. They have a single-story home. Everything slid to the west. The difference between a, with a 15-foot setback with a single-story home and a double-story home is huge. And so we understand we have a 15-foot setback. It, it helps the developer because it allows them to align the house to the, to the east. And we understand that. We're just hoping for some compromise here with the single-story, just to, the other, all of our other neighbors have a 30-foot setback. And so that's what we're looking to you for help with. And with that, I will stand for questions.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Holm.
Mr. White, if we didn't go back to your lot with the lines there, I just wanted to ask a couple of questions. Yeah, that works. Now, you'd mentioned on the, on your east and west side, you just have a swale to, how, how did, can you describe that once again? How do you direct the water runoff that comes in?
So on the, uh, yeah, I don't have a aerial. On the east side, we have grass, a grass well. So it's a flat area. It comes from the roadway. We have a small berm with the roadway. And the roadway has all roadside ditches. So if there's an extreme event, you get a lot of water, it overtops, it'll come down our grass on the east side and continue along to this flat area, which is our lawn, and then continue to the north. We do take drainage from our neighbor to the east. On the west side, it's a, um, a gravel line swale. Um, and it does the same thing. It comes around with a, you can see the high contours around, goes north to the, to our property line, heads to the east and then dumps out where the low elevation is.
So, Mr. Mayor?
Councilman White.
So it does come to pretty much a single point? I mean, it-
Well, that's the low point. Yeah. I mean, it's a 10-foot area that's a lower elevation. Yeah. It's not a pipe, but it's a-
Okay. Okay.
It's not spread over 50 or 100 feet or whatever, unless the storm gets super bad. Yeah.
Got it. Yeah, that's what I wasn't sure. If that came to a single point, if they, they drained off separately or, so that, that helps me understand.
Yeah, you can see the contours. Everything comes down to this one point and then goes north.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Schrader.
Thank you. Um, is there a difference in elevation? Do you know what the difference is between like your home, for example, and the subdivision? You're up higher, right? Because the water's draining down?
So our finished floor matches the finished floor of our neighbor exactly to the east, very close to our neighbor to the west. Um, we have a nine-ish foot drop, um, in elevation from the roadway to the back of our lot. And so our home is raised a couple feet above the roadway-ish.
Okay, yeah. Got it. Um, and, and I guess if you can articulate the concern about the view, um, I'm having a hard time with that one. Just, you're, you're a little high, you're a little bit on higher ground already, right? And-
Yes, we are. We are definitely on, uh, slightly higher ground already. We're not sure what the developer has planned as far as terrace grading, which they did at East Ridge, whether they're going to follow the existing ground, what they're going to do. But I can tell you that 15 feet is about where the, the podium is, where the mayor is. So there's a single-story home or a two-story home. There's a huge difference there. We're just ask, asking for some compromise. We're not trying to change the lot layout. We're not trying to change, um, the setback. We're just trying to work with what's there. And, you know, estate lots do have single-story homes. And we have 25% of ours are single-story homes. It's not an unreasonable request. And the developer did show it on his video, his promotional video. So it must be reasonable to the developer, the way we're looking at it.
Mr. White, you, you mentioned something else, though, setback. What if the developer was to do a 30-foot setback that was similar to the other homes in your subdivision? And again, when I look at this, I can't think that there's going to be a home anywhere near 15-foot setback on these properties. I think it's going to be, I mean, that's close for a half-acre lot. I don't know what they would be doing putting the home that far back, but if there was a 30-foot setback, would you be opposed to two-story?
We'll live with a two-story if there's a 30-foot setback. Yes, sir. Oh, excuse me. Yes, Mayor.
Okay. So something for the developer to even con, to point those, especially those that are being suggested? Counsel, any further questions?
Anyone want to ask about drainage? That risk of having all that drainage go right to a home?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmembers, I'm Annette Alonso, and I live 2204 East Hyper Drive in Meridian. And I'm here representing the Southern Rim Coalition. I'm sure you guys have heard me many times. And don't laugh at my PowerPoint presentation. It's really bad. Okay, really bad. But, um, it gives a point across. And I actually have some photos from Mr. White's lot, so you can see how the contour is. And I also have some photos of other developments that Devco has done where they've done severe filling, which is in East Ridge, and the problems they've caused with drainage, things like that. So you'll be able to see that in my presentation. And I do want to say that this rendition that they've come back with is somewhat better than it was before, and I feel encouraged by that. But there are still several things that I am a little worried about. Um, I, I don't understand why we'd, we'd allow and waive all those, have all those conditions. There's no reason for that in this development. They couldn't make a development that didn't have all those conditions. Um, so I'm just going to start with the fact that this is not a premier golf community. No, I don't care what they say. The houses are up on the hill. There's a small portion down on the bottom, but it is not a premier golf community as you would think. Not like you're walking out your back door and the golf course is there. It's not Poema where the golf course is right at their back door. So, so I don't understand why they're saying that for one thing, the way they're marketing it that way. As far as the gated community is concerned, I don't believe we even allow that within, I, I think it says here that, um, my understanding that it's not allowed within the city except under very specific circumstances. There aren't any specific circumstances here. They just want that development to have like kind of a cushy look to it, so they want to have that private gated. There's no reason otherwise to do that. It's not coming off a major thoroughfare that you have to have it private or gated. Um, the other thing was I wanted to talk about was, um, private streets. ACHD even testified at the last hearing that probably 80% of those private streets, they come to ACHD asking them to take over those streets in the future. So, again, why would we allow those private streets when we don't need to? And in those, in the gated community. Um, I actually spoke to some residents who lived in Lovato, because there was somebody here last time that testified who said he lived in that gated community part. And I spoke to other people who lived in there, and they said it's a hassle. They're always having to deal with the gates. People run into the gates. The gates get broken. Um, there's just kind of a plethora of delays when you're living in the gated community. And I've, no, I've been selling real estate for 10 years, and I've been involved in real estate through lending and, and through construction for 35 years. Never had anybody come to me saying, "I want to move to Boise, Idaho, or Meridian, Idaho, and live in a gated community." Never have I ever heard of anybody say that. So I don't know where their, their marketing is coming from, but I have not seen that ever. And nobody I've spoken to has ever had that asked of them either. So, pass gated. Um, as far as amenities concerned, I think you guys all know that the amenities, um, in this subdivision are interesting. So I want to refer to my, to my PowerPoint. And again, don't laugh at it, okay? Um, so first of all, this is, first I'm going to talk about drainage, because these are the first slides that come up. This is one of the lots in, in, um, Sky Mesa. East Ridge is up above there. When this, when East Ridge was proposed, I actually testified to the council that this road in Sky Mesa down below what had, was stubbed out to go up this hill. And this hill was a gentle slope on, on your right there. That's a, a Black Rock subdivision lot, the last one at the end of the street. And there was a gentle slope that went up here. So they had it stubbed out here at the bottom to go up that hill on a gentle slope, and it could have joined in with East Ridge. Well, Devco said, "Oh, no, there's no way we could do that because of the contour of the land." Well, so instead they built this. And then this caused all kinds of problems in this lot. And for this neighbor on the right that was in Black Rock, they had water in their lot. So they had, there was this ditch kind way coming down there in the middle. And on this bottom lot, you'll see those white tubes sticking out at the very bottom. They had to put a drain all the way to the bottom of that lot because of that water coming off there and that drainage off that hill. So then if you look at the next slide, there we go. So there you'll see those tubes that's looking up, up to Black Rock. That is all no man's land in there, um, also because of Sky Mesa. But here's the, this is East Ridge. So here's what they had to do. Bring that drain down, put the drain in the lot below. East Ridge is up, up, up on the upper side here. And then they had to put rocks all along the bottom to help take that water drainage, so it wouldn't pour down into those Sky Mesa lots. Okay? These, this hillside, it's actually, those are individual lots owned by those homeowners at the top where they put that fence. And that just kind of stays in weeds. And most of the time it's brown, but, um, it happens to be in this picture when I took it. It's green, but. So that's what filling does. And I know in this subdivision, I actually saw it on the pre-app notes, that they do plan on filling the backside of lots in Sky Mesa, which is behind all those five lots that are along that vantage point. And let me show you, oh, here's another spot where they left this no man's land behind East Ridge. Weeds. It's just weeds. Nothing that they could do with that. So here, oh, here's an amenity. This was the amenity that was put in East Ridge. That was a beautiful pond with a water feature. Well, they decided they didn't want to deal with it anymore, so they just filled it with gravel recently and put grass on it. So now that's an amenity. There is another picture of it, and another picture. And there's a pump house right here, but now there's nothing to pump in there. So now they have no water pond to hold irrigation for the subdivision. So moving on, so this is the hill behind Mr., Mr. White's lot. This is from his south. It, it's his northern, Mr. White's northern east, northeastern corner of his lot, looking down the swale. That's that natural drain line that he showed, they showed you in that arrow. That drives, drains down below. So if they fill this, which this is looking down, this is maybe a 10-foot drop or something into this, and then it drops down maybe another 20 feet into that swale. So that kind of gives you a better idea what's going to happen there. And there's no way, if you'll see my next, one of some of the next photos, there's no way they can build on these lots unless they fill. So here's another photo looking down that other direction, so you kind of see how that slope goes down the hill. And this is the, the smoothest slope right here. If you go around that corner up to the northwest, that becomes 58 feet of a hill. 58 feet of a hill is what they're going to put that path on. You can't tell me that people are going to ride their bicycles down that lot, down that 58-foot drop, and then riding back up again. Not going to happen. So as far as this being usable open space, not going to happen. And here's looking to the west behind the Vantage Point lot. So that, that's the fence line over on the far left side there. That's how it looks. It's undulating land that they're going to have to fill, or they won't be able to put those lots on there, those half-acre lots. And that's all I have for you. So I just want to say, to finish up this, it's nice that they've done some improvements to help out the Vantage Point people. It's unfortunate it took this long when we've had several meetings with them, and I've gone to all the neighborhood meetings, and they promised they would do everything that the, the homeowners wanted, and it comes to this. And now they're still asking for another four of those waivers. Why? Why, why do we need to have waivers? There's nothing here that's going to require a waiver. They just need to make a plan that fits the contour of the land, the natural contour. When Southern Rim Coalition was established by Susan Karns, we established it because we wanted to maintain the integrity of the Southern Rim. This is not maintaining that integrity. This is forcing a, a square peg into a round hole, and we don't need to do that. We're not maintaining anything in our beautification if we do that. So with that, I'd like to say, why would we do this? And again, thank you for listening to me. Questions?
Thank you. Counsel, any questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Cavan.
That, appreciate you being here tonight. Your PowerPoint presentation wasn't that bad.
It was ugly, but that's okay. It worked.
Okay, that's all right. So listen, you know, you talked a little bit about the Southern Rim Coalition, and one of the things why I think your organization has always been very valuable to me is that you've come with recommendations. What I heard tonight was a little bit more of subjective opinions about the application without a lot of recommendations to the council. So, help me see, what would you want done differently? I mean, I, I, I'm, I'm hard pressed thinking we're friends, so I can give you a little bit of a hard time, that you're really not concerned about gates or sidewalks in a neighborhood that you don't live. So help me understand what your concerns are about the project that you think that the council needs to address.
Okay. My concern is, why are we going to an R15? What, that wasn't what was originally set there. Okay, why? And our other concern is, why are we filling land that has a natural beauty and contour and drainage? Why? Why are we doing that? Why are we allowing them to come in and rape the land so that a developer can make more money by selling larger lots, making rim lots? Why? That's not our purpose. Our purpose isn't to make sure that the developer makes money. Our purpose is to make sure that we have beautification in our natural geologic community. Okay?
Thanks.
Other questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Schrader.
Wasn't quite sure about the, the pond example. And I'm not, I just wanted to understand, was it that this was a, a non-functional pond that the HOA then decided to grass over? Or was it that the developer, you feel in that example, changed the pond and grassed it out? Like, what was that about?
So it was just to show that what sometimes Devco says they're going to do and what they do, because they still have control of East Ridge HOA. It's not controlled by the homeowners themselves. And I know the homeowners, I've spoken to several, they're angry that that happened. So I wanted to show how, when we have an amenity, the amenity might not stay the way it should be. For instance, a hill that's supposed to be natural, when, you know, you're going to turn it over to the HOA, will it really stay natural? I, I mean, I don't, I, I don't know what will happen, but I don't think a hill is an amenity. And the pond, obviously it was supposed to be, and it was beautiful, but now it's not there anymore.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Schrader.
Thank you. I was just trying to understand what, kind of what you were getting at with the example. Um, would, if, what is a good, I, I want to give you another bite at what Councilman Cavan was asking. What's a great outcome from your perspective? Would it be less fill and more of a natural drainage, similar to what you have now in that rim area? I mean, what does a good outcome from your perspective look like?
I think they could stagger the lots down the hill. They could do a gentle grading so that it still maintains the natural contour of the hill. Um, I, I think that our, our fill, our fill and rape method of building lots is hard. It, I mean, it changes, it changes everything forever. We only have one chance to get this right, to maintain what we have. And my concern really is that they're going to change that drainage into the 10-mile drain so much that there's going to be serious problems down below.
Mayor?
Councilman Schrader.
Thank you. And-
Thank you. And that, I know you're really passionate, and we love that. But I, you know, I think, I'm not sure rape is the, is the right descriptor in this case, right? Let's try to keep this, I appreciate the passion, but let's just try to keep this really directed at the concern and, yeah.
My apologies.
Council, any additional questions?
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, next is Troy Kegge.
Thank you. You can say your name and address for the record, we recognize for three minutes.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. My name is Troy Kegge. I reside at 3766 Vantage Point Lane. I'm here this evening in opposition of the development for a number of reasons. But I've, I've had, I've been to all the meetings with the developer. And each time, you know, the response I get is, I got to take it back to the team and, and I'll let you know. And in most reasons, I guess, I just want to get, come out with my biggest concerns. In the last meeting I was here, I left, you know, hopeful because it was recommended that, just, you know, be good neighbors. And that's really why I'm here, is because there was no change to any of the lots on the, on the minor, minor side, the south side of this development. So the lot layout is the same. My, another concern is the drainage. I reached out to the developer asking for a grade map. And the response I got was, we're not moving any dirt. We'll move maybe a foot or two, but we're not going to move a bunch of dirt. But I don't know how development could be put in with the current grade of the land there. My lot to the west of Mr. White is the beginning of the downslope. So from the west end of my property down to the east border of my property, it drops about six feet and then just continues to go down into Mr. White's property at the low point where it comes into a V. I, I've lived in other subdivisions where my home was built, developer came in next door, or not developer, excuse me, but builder came in next door, built a home, six feet set back on this, on the side property, elevated the house a little bit, and then I had a swamp in my yard. So I had to come in and pay thousands of dollars, have a French drain put in from the back of my property to the front of the property. I don't want my water going into the neighbors behind me at the current, and I don't want their water coming down on me. So I like to have some sort of compromise here so we don't have issues coming down the road. And again, I would like, I moved out to this location because of the open space. And I know that is, it's a big thing for the city. And I know there's a planning coming up for talking about the green space, open space in the city and maintaining that. We have one opportunity to get this right. Now's, I mean, I'm not against development. I mean, if we can compromise and reduce a lot and then stretch those out so we don't, I don't have three homes looking down on my backyard, I would be happy if there was two. But there was no change to the back of my property. I'm not here to talk about view. I'm here to talk about my, you know, my way of life that I've, I'm moved out there for. And just to have a transition that is appropriate and to transition from these larger lots down to smaller lots. I understand. East Ridge is approximately the same size, 77 acres. They're looking at about 80 acres. They have 117 homes. We're looking at 316 now. So I just don't feel the development fits in its current state. And then I would like to see some changes. Thank you.
Thank you. Council, any questions? Thank you. Is that everybody?
That was everybody that wished to testify? There are some people online, though.
Yeah, there's some people in the audience who's there. Anybody else in the audience would like to provide testimony on this item this time? If so, if you could.
Mr. Mayor, can I speak as in?
As a citizen?
As a citizen, I guess. A one and a half minute discussion of the East Ridge Pond, if you would like, or we can squeeze it in later?
Yes, we send later.
Very fair. Yep.
Okay, thank you. If there's anybody online who'd like to provide testimony, if you're confused, use the raise your hand feature at the bottom of the platform, and we can bring you in as well. Seeing nobody online or in the audience who would like to provide testimony, I'd invite the applicant up for final comments and to talk about ponds and other subdivisions. It's your time's up. So it's really your closing, so.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Just to try to tick through some of the comments we heard, there was discussion about the density. And of course, as has been extensively discussed, we are on an MDR-designated property that calls for three to eight. We are proposing at the low end of that range even as an average. Once we get down into those larger lots, we're getting much closer to an R2 level of sizing here. So we're transitioning significantly through that density. You know, there's, there's been a lot of discussion about grading, but it seems to be more connected with view concerns than actual grading. And we absolutely will and have to follow state law and city code about drainage. We will design it with an engineer. Your engineer has to approve both our grading plan and our drainage plan. We are obligated to keep our own drainage on site. The drain that's been discussed about being relocated is also on our site. The neighbors' vantage point are higher than us. So, you know, if they're, they're looking for a compromise here, you know, we can each keep our own drainage. But we will not have a problem with our drainage going to their property. So this is a very experienced developer. They know how to do this. They work with civil engineers, and your civil engineers know how to approve these plans as well. There's, Mr. White commented that every time that they've approached us with something, we haven't agreed. But there's actually numerous examples of our agreement along just this border, and in particular on the lot that is abutting his home based on his specific request about views. And so, you know, as a reminder, the developer has given a tremendous amount and has followed the council's direction to give even further. We're looking at very large lots along this entire border here and double the rear setback along those, double the side setback on the corner, and had already agreed to pull the footprint out of Mr. White's view to try to protect as much of that as we could on the corner. And as a result, that footprint has already shrunk quite a bit. Mayor, you asked about that particular side setback on that end lot. And we've already shrunk down that footprint in response to his request to protect more of his view shed. And so it's actually now a pretty narrow spot. That is oriented different than the other lots. We're talking about a side setback there that already has been doubled to 15 feet. You reduce that further, we've only got 100 feet width there. If you took that to 30 feet, we've got to give a side setback on the other side. You're now looking at a very small house on a custom lot with a view. And it doesn't seem appropriate for that nor needed to protect his view, which we've already done by pulling that footprint back so he can see. You know, none of these homes, of course, have a right to view. They certainly wouldn't even have an expectation to a view being next to private property on that interior line. We're just asking to build within the code. A two-story to two-story transition is appropriate. Councilmember Schrader, you asked a question about where, what houses in their neighborhood were multi-story. Mr. White indicated there was four. But it's important to understand that none of them are along the border with our property. Those are all multi-story homes. And so we are putting two-story homes next to two-story homes, which is appropriate on the, on the size of homes and the gated community and the custom homes that we hope to see there. Ms. Alonso talked about how important it was to the South Rim Coalition to maintain the integrity of the rim. We've worked really hard to do that. We had a discussion already this evening about keeping a natural path. We're asking for a waiver not to plant additional landscaping there. We are trying to keep this very natural. We don't have a road going down the hillside. It's not feasible and would be a huge engineering feat to disturb great pieces of this. Instead, we've taken a piece of property that actually has a lot of challenges with the topography and, and worked with them. We will not be artificially raising our homes through grading activities in any way, shape, or form. We will just be following normal grading practices to construct our homes and to grade this site and to prepare it. I think that's all I have. If anything else, if there's any, if you have questions or concerns about what was said about other developments, I think the developer would love an opportunity to, to address that if it's relevant at all tonight.
Mayor. Deb, I think they mentioned something about a fence, too. I just have that written down on my notes.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Burnt, thank you for reminding me about that. There already is a fence along that property, and it is already behind the neighbors' homes along Vantage Point. And so we don't have any plans for an additional fence in front of their fence.
And Deb, just so, when I was looking at this before, we ran the 30-foot setback question. I was looking at really lots 75 through 84, not the one on the end because of their depth. I understand that one lot could not accommodate a setback reasonably due to its odd shape, but, so we're clear.
Mr. Mayor, thank you for that.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Holgland.
There was a request for phased removal of topsoil. What is the plan for the topsoil removal?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Holgland, it's not practical to do that because of balancing the site. They've got to grade the site altogether. And so you move dirt from one side to the other to balance the site. That's, that's not a practical request. But they will, of course, meet all best management practices for dust control and will comply with every condition that the city imposes in that grading plan.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Holgland.
And Deborah, they talked about not exceeding two feet above the elevation. But with everything, it sounds like Vantage Point subdivision is higher to the south than, than your property is, your client's property, so. And that doesn't sound like, I think you said, there's no plan to build up in terms of anything artificial other than the normal building requirements for lots. Is that, is that correct?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Holgland, that's exactly right. We will just meet the normal building standards. We will grade in accordance with the topography and a normal grading plan to execute the development plan before you. Nothing will be artificially elevated for height reasons or view reasons. And as far as the, the grade of the first floor, that will be done in accordance with normal building practices. You do have to slope the ground away from the house for protection of grading, but that's all standard.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Schrader.
I've got a few, I guess a question to staff, maybe, not being a grading and drainage expert. How we understand, I guess I am concerned about if we're following normal grading practices. Are normal grading practices appropriate to preserve this geological area? Like, is that what we would expect? Like, if we want to try to make sure that the drainage ends up working well, people don't have to put in extra drains, that the rim will still exist and close to its current form? I mean, does that look like a different grading practice or drainage practice than what is in code?
Mayor, members of the council, Ellen and I certainly aren't engineers or grading experts, but I can tell you, we do not have a master grading in drainage ordinance in the city of Meridian. What our code speaks to is basically maintaining drainage on your property. What we've done in these particular instances, where we know we have issues with topography on a site, we typically condition the applicant to provide that master graded, grading and drainage plan to the city for review and approval. Again, I don't know if Public Works has addressed that in their conditions of approval, but if that's something that you would like to add tonight. And certainly, I think the applicant would be agreeable to probably providing some of that information so that we can make sure that there's adequate drainage and grading on the site. Public Works does have some technical specifications, but again, it's.
Yep.
Mr. Dolzby has unmuted himself to speak, so Mr. Dolzby?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we do not specifically address that in our specifications or supplemental specifications, but the Ada County Highway District has very specific ordinances and regulations associated with stormwater drainage. We're required to contain on-site, as Bill had mentioned. They need to follow all of the codes, meet all the regs. It is reviewed and approved as part of their development plan, though.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Schrader.
Yeah, I feel, I feel a little bit like I'm adrift, to be honest, not being an expert in it. I would hope that we would require that condition so that we can at a later point have some experts review, review that. You know, I, Deborah, I, you mentioned Mr. Conger is interested in coming up. I'd love to invite him to do that if he's interested. A picture's worth a thousand words. Maybe those pictures didn't tell the whole story. I didn't think they looked great. Your reputation's important, and I'd be okay with you coming up if mayor and council are okay with that.
Anything prohibiting him from doing so during this time?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Schrader, while he's approaching, if I could just point you to Public Works Condition 1.110. It does require a drainage plan to be provided and reviewed prior to plan approval.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Jim Conger, 4824 West Fairview Avenue. First on that pond, if you go back to East Ridge's original approvals, there is no pond in any of the documents, landscape plan. It's not an amenity. When we worked through that property and when we were up front in our preliminary plat approval of East Ridge, we actually had a waiver of irrigation rights because this property did not have any water rights. We had worked hard, spent literally a little over $100,000 drilling wells to give our residents irrigation water. So we worked above and beyond to not have to hook onto any city, got some surface rights. We were, not surface, but subsurface, so well rights through IDWR. We were concerned that we did not have enough rights, and we did a, what I would call a smallish pond. We had an abnormal, anomaly happen with our water engineers and ourselves when we selected the aquifer that we are in. It actually, when it comes to the surface, I'm giving you way too much information, but it oxygenizes and, and then it calcifies. So that pond started colossing over with a complete sheen of calcium. And I went through 7,000, $8,000 pumps like they were, you know, Bic lighters. They, the calcium just ruined everything. So what we had to do was, our wells, excellent water, excellent well, it just could not be oxygenated in a pond. So we spent all money retooling the pumps to use the water straight out of the aquifer, all per our water right. But that pond, there was of no value. It doesn't get fed from, from ditches, and it would just be stagnant. So it actually got put back like the original approval was. There was no bait and switch. It simply is the best thing for that, for that neighborhood. As far as the drainage, I thought our slopes actually looked amazing in those photos. We had riprap channels at the bottom. There isn't one item in that photo that isn't afterwork. That was all done by our civil engineering and our Conger route team in advance of design. And those actually go down to some subsurface drain beds. The white pipes and all that nasty hillside that didn't have anything, those are, those are unbuilt lots by Boise Hunter Homes. And we worked with Boise Hunter Homes and his project manager numerous meetings to make sure we did our design right, pre-designed, not after it was done, so we didn't affect his future homeowners. Jim Hunter's fairly smart civil engineering individual. All that was done up front to make them happy. Those white pipes you see, I don't know what those are. Those are on somebody's future home site in their backyard, and Boise Hunter Homes must have done something. I think the photos, a little bit of attempt to, to, to show really what's not on our property, and we did not do that. East Ridge drainage is working excellent. Those hillsides work excellent. They are maintained by the CCNRs that your city council had us discuss, which we were going to do anyhow. And the maintenance contract on those is working like, working like it should absolutely work. That's all I have, if you have any more questions.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Schrader.
Thank you. Just to cut through it, so just from, from your perspective, you're not intending to raise the lots on your property, creating a drainage problem for these neighbors in Vantage Point?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Schrader, absolutely not. It's. Yeah. Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Schrader, absolutely not. It is the opposite. We are lower, just as everyone has said.
Okay. And are you intending to maintain the slope of those properties to some extent as well?
Yes. That maintenance will be done by, the maintenance of those slopes will be in our CCNRs. We take that very serious in all our neighborhoods. When we turn over an HOA, they need economically function and function so we don't create stress on homeowners. So, no, that is all be set up with a maintenance crew. We actually have a WUI plan to do, but we have done well over a dozen wild urban interface projects in Boise, which does require the WUI. So, you know, with Joe, the requirement of this WUI is not abnormal for us, and we absolutely know how to create the right WUI plan and implement it. That's not new to us. There's no concern.
Okay.
Councilmember Burnt.
I heard the question a little different. I thought Councilwoman Schrader was asking about not maintaining the topography of the proposed common open area, but maintaining the lot, which is what the homes, that if that topography and slope would be maintained. That hurt the question a little. That's what I thought.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Schrader.
I think to some extent both, but I guess just to, you know, are you going to be filling these properties a bunch, as Ms. Alonso was concerned about? I mean, I'm having a hard time judging what normal grading practices are. So, is there going to be a hill here like there is now, or is this going to be flat now? I mean, what, what's going to happen? Just if you could describe it.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Burnt, and Councilmember Schrader, so first and foremost, there won't be any lots like East Ridge where the HOA is maintaining some, some of the individual homeowner's property. So, every lot that will be finished will be 100% maintained by that homeowner in a usable environment. The grading and earthwork, there is depression down there. There will be some fill down there, much as if you go to the northwest part of the same property, we just happen to be talking about the southeast, it is also the drainage of our property going out the northwest. That will get regraded the same, that in the southeast corner, there will be regrading of that property. But there's spots all over the property that will be regraded. These will not, all of these home sites will be what I would call typical home sites and flat half acre. I mean, we are a half acre. We're, a couple of them are 200 square feet under a half acre, but, so all of them will be normal home sites. Our Boise foothills will come off and be on those slopes, but not our home sites.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hoagland.
But, Mr. Conger, and looking at lots 74, 73, that showed a deep, deep slope, you're definitely going to have to do some fill on that to make it workable for lots and different things. But I think I heard Deborah say, whatever happens there, you still will maintain proper drainage per, whether it's state code, city code, all those types of things, to follow down and go off to where it needs to go to. And that's, that was my understanding. I just want confirmation that whatever that fill is, there's still going to be some sort of drainage system in place that takes, takes the water away, so.
No, Mr. Mayor, and Councilmember Hoagland, and to the other two councilmembers. So, yes, any fill that would be done there is still going to be lower than our neighbors to the south, and definitely per state code, any drainage going that way. You know, one, one thing that we did negotiate, just the neighbors didn't like it, when we negotiated and self-imposed our setback of that lot that you're talking about, that also encumbered, you kind of encompassed that drainage area of his. So, it is kind of a twofold. Our self-imposed was to attempt to get along with our south neighbor, and it also was his drainage area. So, it was a win-win all the way around, and we're still comfortable with that self-imposed.
Thank you.
So, Jim, just so I can be educated on that component, I mean, we always, I've always heard, you keep what's on, you create what's on your property, you keep it on your property, for lack of a better terminology. But when you're coming in after someone is already there, it doesn't sound like the current property owners have that same restriction if their property is allowed to drain continuously off. So, under state code or whatever, are you, you're supposed to pick that up and then figure out where it goes because it was there before you and you deal with it? I mean, I'm just trying to get an understanding about how this applies in general circumstances.
Mr. Mayor, yes, sir. There is absolute state code. If there is a water coming onto your property in historical flows, you will 100% have to take care of it to and through your property, just like it did naturally. Never will you get out of that. Never do we try. That, that's non-negotiable.
That just helps me understand the difference between grading your own property so that you, what you have on your property doesn't go into others versus historical flow property and the expectation is to take it to and through, like sewer line.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hoagland.
Quick follow-up, wanted to talk about the path. It looks like the golf cart path. You're putting in some trees there, and that seems, you know, a normal landscaping amenity for that winding path. And then you want to keep that natural grass land following wildland fire plans and whatnot that'll be submitted. Having the gravel path, which to me, that's a steep, it reminds me of being in the Boise foothills and hiking. Having natural grass, the places I've hiked over on that side, they don't plant trees to forest it or anything like that. So, I would imagine you'd have bikers and hikers and just trying to keep a natural, natural look to it. That sounds like the vision you guys have for this particular area. Is that correct?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Hoagland, that is correct. The cart path will definitely be more manicured and meet city code of the trees and everything, and we want that. The gravel pathway, and we did say natural path, but it's definitely going to be gravelled path. It will not be dirt and mud. And it won't have the influence of water. If you start putting the water, then come the weeds on the fringes. You try to have trees and you water those, then you get the weeds with those, and you actually add to your fire concern. So, we believe we can do that right. We have experience in east of Harris Ranch. We've done the Bench Creek In area. We dealt with a lot of these identical environments. And number two request out of every one of our homeowners that we continue to discuss over year after year after our dog parks is walkable trails that are not just up and back. They're circular loops and things of that nature so they can walk every evening. So, that satisfies really our number two amenity that we continue to be asked for.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Joe.
Mr. Mayor and Councilman Hoagland, that's something that we've, that I've worked with Lauren and on this with, was I shared with them the WUI plan for Piravita. And that document is, is written off of known documents that are out there for wildland urban interface items. And in part of that document is, there's recommendations for how high to cut natural vegetation to keep it from exploding, you know, in case there is something going on. So, I've shared Piravita's document with them. It is the same hillside, so we're looking for consistency throughout that whole project, and I know they'll, they'll come along with that as well.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hoagland.
No, that's great to hear that there's, there's continuity and consistency throughout, and of course, the safety aspect paramount. So, but it's good to, good to know. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Schrader.
Thank you, Mr. Conger. If there are no more questions at this point for Mr. Conger, I was curious to hear from some of the neighbors if this comment about, you know, that there won't be any fill, you know, that's, that any fill will be lower than the neighbors to the south. I mean, I wanted to hear some feedback from them if they think that that resolves their concern. Maybe the HOA president or...
Larry White, 3804 East Vantage Point, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Schrader. The concern, at least on our lot, isn't so much raising the elevation too much, it's that drainage. And I know the developer and their staff is really good about saying, we take care of our drainage, you take care of yours. We really don't, our lot isn't big enough to take care of 12 acres of drainage. It's got to go through our property down through Stryberg. So, they can build up their lot, but I'm hopeful that the city engineering staff will look at the full drainage picture and see that we have 12 acres of drainage that could come down here. So, does it make sense to have an engineered fill in the house right in that direct flow path? That's our concern.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Schrader.
So, if I, I'm being not a drainage expert myself, I, what I'm hearing is that the city engineers and staff will review a drainage plan as part of our normal course of business. I will hope at that point, we have the experts that will take a look at that. But I would think, though, from sort of a common sense, maybe it was from the comment that Ms. Alonso made, but it sounds to me like any kind of fill that does happen wouldn't be any higher than your properties that are to the south. So, I would think common sense would lead me to believe that the drainage will happen off your property or off the properties that are there on the south.
Sure. Again, there's a, there's a big drainage area, 12 acres, over 500,000 square feet. There can be a lot of flow coming in there.
Okay.
And cause property damage. So, what happens if there is flow, there is damage, there's a house there, who's responsible, who's liable? That's our biggest concern, that's. That should be a concern for the city council and city staff, I hope as well, and we'll point that out to them. Hopefully, we get an opportunity to review the grading and drainage plan. We'd love to do that. I'm a licensed engineer. I can hire engineers specifically to do that. We'd love to, to take a shot at that. We just want to make sure, at the end of the day, that we're not causing, potentially causing damage to the folks north of us.
Right. Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Schrader.
Thank you. I didn't realize you had that engineering background. That's really helpful. So, yeah, and so I guess that I would hope that we would catch any major issues, but it's also pretty hard for me to believe that a developer would construct a property they're going to sell that would have a drainage issue that would imperil that property. So, I'm hoping that's not the case. I have to hope that this all gets sorted out through the normal course of reviewing the drainage plans, I guess. But thank you for the feedback. Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Pro.
First, I would love it if Councilwoman Schrader was correct. Unfortunately, it's frequent that that doesn't happen, and the homeowners are left with a problem. And you add to that situation where homeowners overwatering their property, not managing their own irrigation use well, and compounds the issue. But I wanted to hear from staff about a couple of things, and thank you. The drainage plan in 1.1, 1.10 to be provided prior to plan approval, can you give us an idea of the timing of that and the overall process? And then, when you receive that plan, since we don't have any code to go off of, what exactly happens with the applicant at that point?
This is a thing for Clint.
Mr. Mayor, yeah, I was going to turn over to Clint, and it really happens at the time they submit for a final plat. That's when their construction drawings come in.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, that's correct. When they do submit for a final plat, their construction drawings come in, and they're reviewed by the Development Services Development Analysts, who ensure that they comply with all of our codes and that drainage stays on site. Also, Ada County Highway District's in charge of the stormwater for the county, and they've got their own set of ordinances and rules associated with stormwater as well. But our thing is that you need to main, you need to contain all of your stormwater and drainage on site and on site at your development for each and every development in the city. So, you aren't allowed to, like, let drainage flow off of your site.
Mr. Mayor. Councilman Hoagland. Question, Clint. So, even for private streets, that's part of our code. They have to maintain that water from the private, contain that water from the private street somehow?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Councilmember Hoagland, yes, inside their development, they need to maintain and control all the stormwater and keep it on site within their developed ground, including, you know, streets and everything as far as I'm, as far as I know.
Good. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Schrader.
Thank you, Councilmember Pro, but that, that's concerning. So, that doesn't make me feel any better. So, I guess a question for Clint. We, it sounds like we don't actually, I mean, it sounds like there's a gap here to me. Like, we may not have adequate city standards for drainage, kind of relying on another agency. We get one bite at the apple. Is there something that the applicant could do now that would definitively take this issue off the table? Is it providing a drainage swale on their own property that diverts the water elsewhere? I mean, is there anything that can be done where we'll know we're not going to have an issue?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Councilmember Schrader, I mean, one suggestion, if they're willing, is they could provide an advanced copy of their drainage plan. They usually would submit it with construction plans. I mean, it's a little outside the box, but maybe just to elas, some concerns, they could provide that plan earlier in the process that we could then review and kind of ensure that drainage was going to stay on site or drainage was acceptable to, it's kind of a public works. And then we could, of course, if you're interested, we could share it with, with you as well.
Clint, maybe this, I bring Ted into the conversation a little bit as well, and go to my poor understanding, but the, I think maybe what we're getting to is what happened in Boise a couple of years ago with, you know, the land and the housing issues and who is ultimately responsible when these type of things come through. And I'm just going to go to my base understanding is, we don't have people on staff that do that. The engineer who stamps the plans is the one that has signified that it meets the requirements and does that. And I want to say what we do is pre-functory, if that word is, I'm using it correctly. But Ted, Clint, if you could at least help understand where, what we are really doing in this process in a legitimate fashion, so council has a clear understanding of expectations.
Mayor, you're, you're correct. It's the engineer who's hired by the developer who stamps that drainage plan, and that's the person that's ultimately responsible for. As you saw in that hillside issue, Boise was ultimately responsible. So, use it, make sure that there's nothing unusual, but we are not certifying what the other engineer has already certified.
Now, to me, that clarifies what my understanding is. I just don't know if that helps council understand also what our role is in determining this issue.
And, Mr. Mayor, as long as I've got the floor, we've kind of gone outside the usual process of back and forth, and I just wanted to make sure you gave the developer rebuttal up.
We will. Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hoagland.
On that, that drainage issue, I was going to ask Mr. White, make sure I had the understanding, because I think it is, he wants to make certain that whatever their drainage plan is, doesn't cause a problem as the water drains from your property that's coming from other properties and heads out. It's not going to be delayed or detained or in some way allowed to back up and cause any problems on your property. So, I...
And I think also the property below.
And the properties below. So, I, I think we, I think we're there on the same page. Yeah, a property below. So, I'm, I, I think that engineer and what the developer will be doing is making sure there's not, no, not damage to the property above because it's historical drainage, and then making sure there is proper drainage adequate on the property below. So, that's the responsibility. And from what I heard, Ted, that the engineer who stamps that will be responsible to make sure that happens. So, I think we're good. Thank you.
The applicant would like to come back up and continue to address any issues or final, or additional final comments, council. Wish council have more questions for the applicant specifically.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Pro.
I would appreciate if the applicant would respond to concerns regarding possibly, possibly that the applicant didn't take into account the waivers that are being requested. that the applicant didn't take into account the, the waivers that are being requested, that, that the development could have been designed to avoid some of these waivers that are being requested. There was a comment that was made by a member of the audience, and if you could just give some feedback on that. I, I understand the, the ge, the geography in some of these situations doesn't allow, we have to have some long block lengths just because there's no way to create an intersection in some of these locations. But if you could give more detail, I think that would be helpful.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Pro, be happy to. So, your, your code does provide for waivers when you have specific circumstances. And so, one of the waivers is where you are up against a hillside, and that's what's happening in the northeast corner here. And so, that cul-de-sac length was extended about 100 feet. Another block length is above the far lateral, just north of the far lateral over in the southwest. And your code also allows an extension of the block length where you have a natural feature such as an irrigation facility that does not allow a through connection there. The, the new change that we just provided in request to the councils, request to extend these larger lots across the southeast also creates a longer block length there, and there is no opportunity for a through street because Vantage Point doesn't have any sub-streets that come up to our neighborhood. And so, that has now become a longer length there when we took out that turn that was around the park area there. So, all consistent with your code and the language that's in your code that allows each of these waivers or extensions, and these are natural features on the site and existing conditions from the Vantage Point layout. It's not something that we have done to adjust, to create anything different. And, and again, our layout just ta, just takes advantage of the property that's given to us and provides a nice development within that that meets the MDR designation. So, still at the low end of that density and have all of these natural features to work around. Does that answer your question about the waivers?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Holton.
Deborah White here. One of the things, there was a comment about R-15, too much density, but the, my understanding was the only reason you're asking for R-15 was for private streets. It meets density of R-8. Is, is that correct? Did I understand that correctly?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Hoagland, that's correct. Staff's interpretation is that we need the R-15 in order to have the gated community for the private streets, but we have agreed to meet the R-8 dimensional standards throughout.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor.
Councilman Schrader.
Deborah, still stuck on drainage, I'm really sorry. It, I'm, there's like apparently 12 acres worth of drainage that's heading toward two of your lots here in the corner. What, what is the game plan so that those lots don't suffer from structural damage because of water? I mean, are you guys putting in a drain, a swale? Is there a game plan with these? Because it's not just the neighbors from their end, right, the water backing up, it's also these, these home sites as well.
Right. Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Schrader, yes, we will have to capture that. Absolutely, there will be a plan. There is a natural drain there. We'll align it in the right location to make sure it works with the graded lots, that it's absolutely in the developer's interest and the stamping engineer, as was pointed out, to make sure that this is very functional. And so, this is not a new game for these guys. They've done a lot of development, they know how that works, and they will make sure they have qualified engineers to design that correctly. So, yes, they will design it with that drainage, natural drainage in mind and the drainage from our property in mind.
Is there any objection, Mr. Mayor, if I can?
Councilman Schrader.
Well, one, one of the suggestions, is there any issue with providing an advanced copy of the drainage plan in this case? That was a suggestion from the Public Works Department, at least to maybe not necessarily at the exact time you normally would, maybe a few weeks ahead, just to, maybe a little more time than usual for staff to review if it's a perfunctory review.
Great word.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Schrader, we'll develop that at the time that all the construction plans are developed. And so, it's developed in conjunction with that. The same engineering work is going into a lot of that. And so, that will be submitted at the time of the first final, not the first final plat. Will be for all of it? Okay, I stand corrected. At the very, at the time of the first final plat, which will be well before we get to this phase, so there will be a lot of time for review there.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Schrader.
So, then, then I, I think our staff, if I'm just trying to repeat back the process, our staff, even though an engineer is doing these plans, our staff still needs to review them. So, I'm hoping it's within our control then for staff to take whatever adequate time they need to review prior to signing off.
Yeah, I think staff takes all the time they need to do their work.
All right, thanks.
Not re-engineer, reviewing the engineering. Yes.
Just a couple of quick questions. Deb, on the new open space in the center there, it wasn't highlighted in your presentation, but it looks like it's three lots, four lots? How big is that? Is it an acre?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Borton, it's approximately an acre.
And if, if I'm just to the east of it, in the private street area, and I want to walk to it, am I walking down that private driveway to get to it?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Borton, you certainly could, but there is a lovely sidewalk that is also along that boulevard to access it as well.
Realistically, people aren't going to do a sidewalk the way around. Am I looking at it wrong? Looks like they might just go straight and walk down the private drive.
Absolutely, they could. Yeah.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borton.
Question, is it, remind me, is it all one HOA intended for the whole subdivision?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Borton, yes.
I mean, this, one of the funky, or parts of it is the disconnect, and you've got some geographic issue or some topography issues to deal with, but the southwest and the northeast are disconnected as you could possibly be, for reasons understandable. But if one of the conditions is the private streets for 106 homes, it's paid for by the HOA, got some folks, like, I'm thinking about the folks over in the southwest who are going to be paying dues for private streets, then they, they'll never touch or see whether they like it or not. I'm looking at this correct. Is that a fair accusation?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Borton, I assume that will be allocated accordingly.
Mr. Mayor.
Need to get into the details.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
I recall correctly, I think, we asked this question, I think, the last time that it came up, and if I remember, the applicant said there's a special assessment for the folks who live within the gated portion to have the roadway maintenance covered. I may be, it's rare that I can remember something with that vivid clarity, so it could be wrong, but that may be something the applicant would want to address if my memory's correct.
Mr. Mayor, prior to that response, if I may.
Can you answer that question real quick on the private roads?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Borton, yes, it's been confirmed. It is a separate dues allocation for the gated area.
Yeah.
And yes, we did discuss in detail how that set aside at the last hearing and allocated right from the beginning, but I don't know that the specific question came up about the differential between the two of gated, non-gated, and it is separate for the allocation that's assigned.
Councilman Pro.
So, with the, so, CCNRs are always based on the goodwill of homeowners. There's no way to get around that. And once the developer exits, their involvement and their voting rights in an HOA, now we're, now we have neighbors that are executing the conditions. As Councilman Borton stated, we have a variety of different properties here with significantly different ways of living and probably very different needs about what they're expecting from their neighborhood. So, it, with it, with the developer's experience, having done these types of properties with a variety of different sizes of homes, sizes of lots, can, can you give us some examples on how that is addressed through the covenants and specific, what, what strikes me specifically in this project is that we're going to have some areas to maintain that are really unique, the hillside, for example. And I, I can imagine some significant challenges in the homeowners' association maintaining this very unique amenity. Those decisions being made by individuals who may or may not have any actual knowledge of how to maintain that, that type of geography. So, I ju, I just want some, you don't have to, you know, give me specific statements out of your covenants, those probably are not even written yet. However, I want to have some understanding that there's some protection of the, of the, some protection of these amenities and that it's going to be written in a way that is kind of foolproof, that the homeowners can't come in and, and damage what you're attempting to create in the hillside with the features that are so unique to this project.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Pro, Jim Congreg in 4824 West Fairview. As far, you know, wrapping the whole conversation up with the association, there, there, you, we have done this in numerous communities where we have a mix of residential uses. You've seen it in Paramount where they have the normal homes and then the cadence product that Wright and Brings on. So, we have a main association, and one goes through and picks all the main attractions that everybody gets to enjoy, and, and you have budgets for that. And then, you have the sub-associations of the like residential products. So, the gated area would be a sub-association. All of those pay different dues. Your, your sub-associations pay into the main. All of it's managed by one HOA and more importantly, managed by one maintenance company as well. So, that's the, the luxury of the HOA is containing this big umbrella to make it all function properly. As far as protecting the assets, you know, upfront, a prudent developer with his proper homeowners' association manager will set up funds that, that are paid into, so they, they all, when the maintenance time comes, they have money associated with that. All of that is set up in advance, and, and when we leave a community, that again, it needs to function economically for the HOA and, and, and function, you know, physically on a day-to-day basis. I think I answered that or did not answer that.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Pro.
Uh, you did. One question, one comment. The question I have is, how, how does the voting work then with these, the sub-associations? I would, are, are they actually, I mean, it's one board that's making decisions for the entire community. Sub-associations have, they have separate voting? I mean, help us understand. And the reason that I'm getting so detailed in this is it's just a really unique property, and my anticipation is if the HOA isn't executed, we've all seen situations where everything can be, CCNRs can be written perfectly, we can try to think through all the possible scenarios of what could go wrong, but there are just situations where the homeowners, where it's not managed well. And now, all of a sudden, we have an, and a neighborhood in this area amongst other very well-designed, well-executed neighborhoods, which just isn't looking so great. And I think, and the reason I'm asking that is because I, I think there are some unique features to this that, that were, that could become an issue. And, and you, as the developer, can, can design it, set it up perfectly, but I just will, I just, I guess, want to understand that, that there is, that it's structured in a way that, that there's some solutions that we, can be given to future board members, future HOA decision-makers that, that can help them solve some of those issues. I don't know if I'm explaining myself well.
Excellent explanation. Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Pro, I will answer tonight and at any time, maybe a coffee meeting to go further over CCNRs would, would be amazing because we love it. We actually, every project gets set up. We use givens personally, a different division than Deb, of course, and we go through it from scratch. What, and it's exactly that. What are the needs? What are financial needs? What are potential pitfalls? You know, as far as this property, this is a cakewalk compared to our Moboto. We had four different single-family residential uses that were all sub-associations, and we had apartment project and the commercial in the front, which were two other subs. So, we ended up with six sub-associations, regional pathways. And as far as expenses and this one being more unique, we, we actually have less risk than our pool facilities that we put in Moboto. This homeowner doesn't need the pool in, in what we're demographic targeting, but if we had it, we would actually have bigger risk and things of that nature as far as setting money aside and such. So, all of that is not taken lightly. Your questions are amazingly on point. We aren't here for one project, as everybody knows, they've seen us for a long time now. You're only as good as your CCNRs and how you lead that neighborhood. So, that's up top to one of the most important things. That and drainage and grading, those two items are most important.
Mr. Mayor.
More dialogue. Councilman Cavanagh.
Every part about me wants to make a motion to close the public hearing, but I feel like we should keep it open just to allow, if there's any additional deliberation, council, if we're ready to, so, you can grab a seat, but we may pull you back up. Mr. Mayor, I'm happy to start.
Councilman Cavanagh.
I, I think I made my feelings about this project well-known when it was before us I liked what made this product innovative, the previous design. I think it loses a little of its charm. I understand they're doing that to, these are some of the values that are important in our community. So, I think they took some of the comments from council, added the sidewalks, moved the open space, relocated some lots. Overall, I'm very, very supportive of this project. I trust our staff that when it comes to drainage, that they're going to look at those plans appropriately. I see no reason why I need to be opposed to this project.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Schrader.
I appreciate some of the changes that were made from the last meeting. I watched the last meeting. One issue that I don't like is sidewalks on one side of the street. I don't agree with that. I understand that the developer has a viewpoint about, about the, about not wanting that for part of the subdivision. I do feel like that cake was baked. I, I want to respect some of the feedback and direction that was given to the developer by council in the last meeting, so I think I can get over that issue. It meets the open space, where we're going on open space, but not, not by a ton. I am, I am concerned that, it sounds to me like we have a real gap in terms of just understanding the topography in an area. We, we don't have very many areas like this in the city where we have a geologic feature like a rim, and, and we're trying to make sure that we have good drainage and we're, you know, kind of upholding the natural landscape and the beauty of that landscape. I'm concerned that there is a gap there. I wish we could, you know, have, have paused development in this area to study this area further and get some recommendations from staff on how to best treat it. I'm not, I haven't quite made up my mind yet in this meeting. I'm a little bit on the fence. There's, I think there have been some positive changes by the developer. I'm happy that I'm hearing, I, I think there is support for a south fire station, or I wouldn't even, if you're voting for this, but I'm still making my mind up right now.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Holton.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm in agreement with Councilman Cavanagh, and, and I kind of like the fact that they pushed the envelope a little bit for the city in their first design because that is not something how we typically do things. And, you know, we're all about central locations and those types of things, and with an 80-acre site, trying to split that up and create different areas of, of community, you know, and, and that, that was a novel approach. Didn't fly, but, and, and now we have, you know, have to deal with longer streets and, and for way the topography and laterals work and hillsides, so I'm, I'm okay with that. I do like the fact that we're treating our hillside area similarly with Chief Monjorno pointing out for wooey and, and how we handle the, the grasses, and it's kind of exciting to have pathways and on, on hillsides. to have pathways and on, on hillsides, because we don't have much of that in Meridian. So I think that was a, a good treatment, and I, I'm satisfied with how the drainage process will work to protect everyone involved in that. So I'm, I'm certainly in favor of this.
Mr. Gosey, you have your hand raised. Was there a comment you were looking to make?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I just wanted to add a little more context. We have a section in our City of Meridian Public Works Designs Standards that revolves all around grading and drainage, that I was just reading through for a little while, outlines requirements that they're going to have to do when they're developing their grading and drainage plan, references some ACHD standards that they need to abide by when they're developing the plan, sort of, kind of walks them through the process on technical requirements we have for drainage plans, what they need to go through to, like, ensure compliance, that sort of thing. I just wanted to make sure you're aware of that. Thanks.
Thank you, Clint. Council, additional comments?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borton.
I, I was pretty specific last meeting in regard to what I would have liked to have done, the changes that I, that I really recommended. And I'm appreciative that the developer listened and did exactly what we told him to do, so with that, I'm in support.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Pro.
I had to exit our last hearing, but I did, I did watch the rest of the meeting. And I'm waiting to give my opinion, because I wanted to hear from the council members who were here. I think it was very, it was clear what council requested the applicant, and I think the applicant has really attempted to meet everything that council asked in the last meeting, the rest of her ability. Curious if Councilwoman Borton, who was present, has any other, has anything else to add before I share my thoughts? Because I'd like to really hear from everybody who was here. Although, watching, watching a video is effective, but being here is, being here, it's not quite the same, but if he has no comments, then I will proceed.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borton.
It's staying pretty quiet. I think the applicant answered questions that we left the applicant with after the last meeting. No, not a big, the, the topography of this project, location of the waterway at the south, southwest creates some challenges. Just create, invites some disconnect that I've struggled with. Understanding there might not be a lot of, a little more disconnected than some other communities that we see. I wrestled with, we talked in the last hearing about, you know, a larger common open space, some of the more traditional clubhouse, pool amenities that we see, and the applicant's proposed something different and tried to break that up and allocate the open space, things like that throughout the community, make it more accessible for people to use their one to two acre smaller open space, and that's innovative to Councilman Cavanagh's perspective. Asking us to stretch a little bit. Gated community and the private streets is a larger component, but we've seen, discussed in the last meeting, it can be done well, and it's different. I think those circumstances might provide, tip the scales towards approval for me. Understanding that that's really what we're, what we're trying to see is something a little bit different, which challenges here. I think that the items asked to be addressed were addressed.
That's all, that's all, Pro.
Tough, tough property to design, and I, despite being familiar with the applicants, some of the applicants' other projects and similar subdivisions in the area, it's still hard to get a sense of it looking at a two-dimensional photograph and drawing. I, and the applicant has met the standards, and there isn't anything on here that I can argue with as far as the conditions, applicants agreeing to the conditions. But I also don't have anything that wows me either, as far as, I still feel like that I, we need, we need the density. So it's one of those things where, for me, I have to balance what I know we need as a city, applicant's not asking us to change any zoning, not asking us to, you know, have higher density, so with that, I, I have to kind of leave that be. Not because I think that I want, not because I would like to see this area of Meridian necessarily stay state lots, but because it's just, it's really just hard to see 80 acres in, in, in an area on the edge of town, currently on the edge of town, be the dense, although I realize that there's a need for it. So I guess what I'm trying to communicate is, I hope there be just a little bit more, I don't, I don't know how to explain what I'm trying to say. There's quite a bit of amenities here. The applicant has, has, has done really everything that, that council requested in the last meeting. What I, what's still standing out to me from this is few trees and a lot of streets, and that's what I see when I look at this. And I'm just trying to reconcile that for myself, and it's not, it's not a criticism, it's just an observation. And struggle the same as Councilwoman Schrader, there's some really great things about this. We need these properties. I am happy that the applicant added some larger lots. Hope that would be, I would hope that would appeal to the Southern Rim Coalition, as that is something that's a priority of theirs. So I can't say that there's anything in here that I specifically would not approve. I just can't say I'm, I'm exceptionally excited. That's a long explanation, but that being said, I assume we're ready for a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Move we approve, oh, Mr. Mayor, move that we close the public hearing. Thank you, making sure you're all paying attention. Close the public hearing on item one, annexation and preliminary plat for H 2020 dash 0127.
Second the motion.
I have a motion, second to close the public hearing. Is there any discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? The ayes have it.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Move we approve item number one, H dash 2020 dash 0127, inclusive of the conditions of approval provided by staff on June 29th, and include all applicant, staff, and public testimony.
Mr. Mayor, second the motion.
I have a motion, a second. Is there discussion on the motion? Councilman Schrader.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to think about putting in a condition which I believe reflects the applicant's own agreement, that they will not put in any fill that raises the elevation of their property higher than the neighbors to the south advantage point, without an exception from the city public works staff.
Councilman Pro.
Sorry about that. For clarification, Councilwoman Schrader, we could talk about raising the ground level to build, but really, it's ultimately the height of the homes that's put there. So can you clarify what it is that you're? Yes, I'm not concerned about the height of the homes. Actually, don't think the view shed argument for me personally in this application is, is very compelling, given that the neighboring homes are at a higher elevation and that most of them are multi-story buildings. The issue that, that I'm concerned about is seeing a large level of fill on this property that makes it so that the drainage from the 12 surrounding acres actually pools in the vantage point properties. It sounded to me like the applicant was agreeable, that they will not be doing that level of fill that would actually raise it above the, the neighbor's advantage point.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
I, I appreciate the request from Councilmember Schrader. Again, I understand the applicant's going to have to adhere to all city, state, and federal law. I, I get a little nervous about a precedent about starting to condition the amount of fill that can or cannot go into a particular project. I hear what you're hoping, I hear what you're trying to achieve. I guess I feel more confident that that's already going to be achieved at the, at the city and state level.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Schrader.
I, I guess my, my concern, and I, I will take it upon myself to get more educated on drainage and grading issues, but my concern is, I'm hearing that there's a pretty significant gap that we're not reviewing from an engineering standpoint, and that city and federal law are not preventing problems in surrounding neighborhoods that are being seen, and even fellow council members that are saying that there could be an issue. I guess I'd just like to see an exception from, from staff if this were to occur, that it made sense for some reason. I just, I, I don't have confidence that this drainage issue is going to be avoided at this point. That's okay, you can move forward, but I probably would vote no.
And I think just from, I, I think that no, no disrespect to all the engineers in the room, including the neighbor, sometimes engineers get it wrong. And I don't think that we can correct that if that's the case in individual homeowner situations where sometimes engineers or people doing the work get it wrong, even when they try to do the grading, even if it meant to how the engineer defined it. So, yes, I've got a drainage issue at my house as well. My neighbor's stuff drains into my yard. I'm not as concerned about it, I just talk to my sprinkler guy, and we turn off my sprinklers, and they water my yard for me. So I, I, I mean, that's one of those things where I, again, I understand what you're saying from a practical standpoint, but the, I, I think the issue you're trying to correct is really one about whether or not the engineering is done correctly, and what happens if it's not.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Schrader.
I guess I'm, I'm, I'm just reacting to the topography and, and that it's not a sprinkler issue, that it's like 12 acres of land that drain into this property specifically, and that we haven't, as a city, studied this geological area to understand the, the best way to sort of handle it, is, is my hesitation. I, I, I realize I'm an outlier on this one, I'm off on my own, I'll try to study up on it, but I, I'm, I'm hearing about a big concern that I don't feel is being addressed at this point.
Councilman Borton.
Thought I recalled the applicant being comfortable and planning to develop in fashion consistent with that condition anyway. There's a head nod or a nod. I thought that condition couldn't certainly hurt the bay here. Councilwoman Schrader represented for all those lots, southern portion. Mr. Mayor. I don't think there's anything that would prevent the applicant if that's something that they want to do. I, I just get very reluctant to conditioning something like that, how it's forced, how we're monitoring that. I just, I, I just think that is, that's not, I, I had considered that when making the motion and chose not to include that particular piece, just because I think it sets somewhat of a dangerous precedent that I'm, I'm not comfortable with. Motion fails, and we want to reopen public hearing and talk, and I'm happy to do that.
Further discussion on the motion? Okay, then with that, ask a quick call to all.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Borton. Cavanagh.
Aye.
Pro.
Aye.
Schrader.
No.
Hoagland.
Aye.
Burton.
Five ayes, one no, and the item is agreed to. Thank you all for coming out this evening and coming back for those that have been here multiple times for this project. With that, council, we are at the end of our agenda. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borton.
Move that we adjourn the meeting.
Second the motion.
I have a motion, a second to adjourn the meeting. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? The ayes have it.